You guys ready? Everybody ready?
Yes.
It's not gonna do anything.
Go ahead and call our meeting to order, January the 7th, 2025. Welcome everybody here. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, on the agenda, we've got a couple of changes. Uh, library folks won't be here tonight.
Which one?
Library.
They're out.
They're out. And the CTT is over at the town council meeting, which is taking place at the same time. And when they come in, we will get them, let them speak so they can travel. They're coming back, going back to Boone. So that's only two, right? And on the closed session, we need to add personnel to the request for consult with attorney. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second in discussion. All in favor? Five oh. Okay, public comment time. If anyone wishes to speak, now's the time. Just step forward. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public comment. Move on down. Item A, public hearing. Well, we'll open the floor for a public hearing for the vote to proceed. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a vote, a motion to proceed.
I'll make a motion to proceed.
The motion second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Adopt resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Just, just, uh, one minute.
Okay.
Page twenty-four and twenty-five, Bobby.
Twenty-four and twenty-five, Bobby.
The, uh, April, uh, on page two, down towards the bottom, lenders, legal counsel. Who pays that fee?
We will have to pay that fee, and it is included in the term sheet. With Truist, it was gonna be about eighty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, it's already included in?
It is already included, and it's in the term sheets that I have presented to the board.
So.
Any other questions? Not like a motion?
Move.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Moving on down, section B. Presentation of the board. As I said, the library board is not here tonight, so we'll move on down to the educational foundation. Melissa Vestal.
Good evening. I'll try not to take too much of your time, but it's been a couple of years since we presented from the educational foundation, and lots of it's been going on with the educational foundation since, well, since we've been in the office of the street here. So Melissa Vestal, I am the executive director there, and, uh, and I'm very, uh, very humbled to be that director there. We've got so many things going on. I had a graphic, but that's okay. It's probably in your packet somewhere. It's kind of of a tree, and our roots for the educational foundation, they're, they fall in scholarship money for students, okay? And, um, we're still working really hard to help students go to trade school, community college, college, university, to pursue credentials that would help them fulfill, fulfill the, to be in the careers that they want to be in. And that's something that we're really proud of. One thing that we're extremely proud of, it's over the past couple of years, we've really increased scholarships in the trade section of our, of our scholarship giving. We have a lot of members of our community that have come forward to sponsor those trade scholarships. And the Ed Foundation sponsors a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar trade scholarship for students going into the trade. So that's a community need that we see, and our community definitely supports that. So, um, one other part of our, of, of what our strategic plan is, is to, is to keep, keep increasing scholarship money giving to students, but to also increase renewals for students. And what a renewal scholarship is, is it's a student that, they're in school their second, third, and fourth year, maybe fifth year of school, okay? So, you know, we've, we, um, our goal was to meet about fifty percent of what we are giving in scholarships, fifty percent of that to go to high school seniors and fifty percent of that to go to students who are currently in school. And we are right there at that fifty-fifty mark, and nothing has been taken away from high school seniors. Matter of fact, that has increased significantly. So that's our, that's, that's our roots. That's where John Woodruff got started, was with scholarship money for students a long, long time ago, back when I was in high school. And, um, we're still there. And our community works really hard to sponsor scholarships for students. We're, we, we have about a hundred and thirty individual scholarships that students can apply for through the Allegheny Educational Foundation, and that is remarkable. Whenever Susan Nalo, who is at town council meeting tonight, and we had to divide and conquer, but when we started, um, when we started looking at, you know, what our jobs were gonna be with the foundation, we were looking at scholarships and how important they were to so many people in our community and to John Woodruff. We also, throughout, throughout our history, we've been, we have proudly given grants to Allegheny County schools that are like, really classroom grants for teachers who are trying to look for ways to be innovative in the classroom or maybe even in the guidance department, ways to help support students in, in their mental health needs. And so we're still working with grants with students. We've actually increased giving of grants for those teachers that eventually, that goes into the hands of students. One thing that we are extremely proud of that just happened this past summer is the initiation of our GREAT Grant. GREAT stands for Growing, Retaining, Empowering Allegheny Teachers. I'm sure you all know there is a, as in a lot of professions, but in teaching as well. Teachers, they're, they're beginning to, they're hard to find and retain and keep in the profession. Allegheny County Schools is doing an excellent job of getting, getting teachers into, into our system, but we wanted to find ways that we could support those teachers as well. So the GREAT Grant is a grant that helps them as they are pursuing their national board certification. That's something I think Dr. Irwin was, would be very happy to hear, so make sure you share that with her. Something she worked on for a long time. That is, it's an opportunity of professional growth for a teacher they can't get any, really any other way. And it's a twelve percent increase in their salary. And then also, we're looking to help teachers that need to obtain credentials or that are looking to obtain a master's degree to, to ensure some of their professional development. So that's something that we're really, we're really proud of, and it's in full swing right now. Um, I introduced it in my presentation a couple of years ago that we were starting this program called Trojan Tracks, Trojans Reaching to Achieve Excellence. And at that time, Trojan Tracks, um, we thought was gonna be a mentor program. It still is a mentor program, and it's, it's running strong, strongly. So what happens is all eighth grade students in Allegheny County are offered, and almost a hundred percent of our students take advantage of a mentor that comes into the class, into the school system and meets with them, talking to them about goals. Not fussing at them about grades and not fussing at them about attendance, just talking to them about what their goals are and what, you know, ways that we can help support them reach those goals. Eighth grade's early, but they need to be thinking. They, their goals may change, but it's healthy to have goals. So, um, they start with them in eighth grade. They meet with them four times a year, and they stay with them until they graduate. And then at the end of that time, they can apply for the, for the Trojan Tracks Scholarship, okay? That scholarship is available to anyone that meets the criteria, and the criteria is attainable for every student. We've tried to make sure that no one is excluded in that scholarship. So it's not one of these scholarships where a student applies for it. The donor who set up the scholarship comes in and makes a recommendation as to who they'd like to receive that scholarship. That is a scholarship that they receive if they qualify for it. And we hope they all get it. That would make, that's, that's our goal, anyway. So that was what we started with. We've added, um, four new, four other things under the Trojan Tracks programming side to the foundation. We have an adopted college student, um, program that matches, that teams all fourth grade classrooms in Allegheny County up with a college student, and they converse monthly. They zoom back and forth. They talk about what it's like to be on a college campus, to be in a college classroom, um, to, um, to go to a sporting event, what it looks like to weather the elements. And we know that weathering elements on college campuses has looked very differently over the past six months, from hurricanes to blizzards, but, well, not quite a blizzard, but it's, it's cold. So they, they pair, and it's a reciprocal type relationship where the college student feels supported and as well, as well as that classroom. And then, um, most of those students have gone into those classrooms and helped do some things over the holidays with, with the students, just to get to know them. So that's adopted college student. Another thing that we have started is, is our high school heroes program that matches, that matches, um, high school students up with, um, fourth grade classrooms, and they can, they complete a research project that we look at what their career goals are. We find them a place to go to complete those goals. All, they're three people in a group, and they, we look at what their goals are and find a school that they could all go to, whether it be Wilkes Community College, it might be Kentucky Welding Institute. I mean, it could, whatever fits what their needs are. And then they can, they have a, they do some research on that all day long, and at the end of the day, they hold a college career fair where their students and peers, where the, where their peers and parents can come and attend the career fair and ask questions, and they're the experts, and they have cool T-shirts and things like that. It's a great program, and all fourth grade students across our county are involved in that. And then the last thing that we owed, that we have added and piloted this past fall is our AHS Junior English Class Professional Lunch. And what happens with that is our students, it's the end of a, of a unit that they have in Mr. Stewart King's English class, where they're writing resumes, they're practicing interview skills, and they're doing all of these things. And then we, the Education Foundation, takes them out to Old Bo and Tommy Maines treats them to a professional lunch where a professional sits at the table and speaks with them, and then we kind of go through what the etiquette is for eating that meal. And they all really enjoyed that. So we piloted that this, this fall, and we'll do that again this spring, and it was very successful. So I look for those programs, for all of these programs to stay. We started a new podcast, Allegheny Voices. I won't go into a lot of detail, but that just kind of sprung up like that. But we've into four different episodes of Allegheny Voices with about thirty-six more to come. We also are, we have a fundraiser that's coming up on April 5th. It's Tropical Take It or Leave It. If, I don't know if any of you went last year, but it was a load of fun. People were already asking for their tickets last year for this year. It's a good, clean night of fun where, um, we are working to increase renewal money, like I said, for those students. So lots of great things going on with the educational foundation. We got to meet with Mr. Shephley the other day and explain to him some of the things that we're going, that are going on with us, and asking him if there are any ways that we can collaborate with some things, um, between, between both of us. So that's what we've got going on at the educational foundation. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Questions?
Just a comment. Oh, wait. Several years ago, when we started the foundation, we struggled just to raise ten thousand dollars that first year. Over the time, we've become a multi-million dollar endowment for the education for the children of Allegheny County. For a county that's fifth in size in the state, the foundation, in my opinion, puts all ninety-nine other counties to shame. We do a fantastic job educating the children that graduate from Allegheny High School. And I thank you for all the hard work. It's been a big change in the last few years having somebody on the ground that's there five, six, seven days a week sometimes, supporting the foundation.
Well, we love what we do, and we believe in what we do, and we don't do anything that we don't think benefits all kids. So, um, that's, as an educator, as a retired educator, brings me a lot of joy.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
I got a question for her.
One more question, Melissa.
Not, not too quick.
Okay.
Do you have a number on what was committed to the last graduating class?
Okay, so I left that up there. Okay, the graduating class and total scholarships are two totally different numbers, but it's around four hundred thousand dollars.
With, I know twenty years ago, you know, there's a lot more added-on stuff here, and I know that, and this is in a good way. But I guess my other question is, with even adding on all these things, your education foundation funds are still growing.
Yeah, and that is something worth mentioning is our scholarship side. We are very careful to operate our scholarship side. That, what, there are two sides, scholarship and programming. Trojan, Trojan Tracks is program. We earn, we earn all of that money. That's not money taken from our portfolio. That is money that we, that we are doing fundraisers for and earning money for, um, going out and, and, and a lot of community support. We do have a lot of people that come by and just want to, to help us out. So, um, yeah, that's, that is worth mentioning is one has, the, the growth of Trojan Tracks has definitely, it probably has increased the growth of scholarships or contributed to it.
Well, I just wanted to say too, again, to add what Bobby says, it's, it's something, um, and I think last time he was here, we were talking about it, and as a parent, made life easier for my three children to go to different colleges and stuff. And as a child growing up, my parents didn't have the money to send me to college. So it's, it's something I really, really appreciate, and I think our county appreciates, um, what that, and it's like Bobby says, it's, it's astronomically different than other counties that counties can provide that to people. And in our county, where the income level and stuff, it's, you know, you just can't say enough thanks. And I love what you and, um, all have added to it since you all become a part of it. Because to start with, it was just basically you send in applications, you get your-
Well, we started looking for a model to follow, and there was not a model to follow. I'm just gonna tell you. It stands, it's, it's very unique, the way it operates.
Very important is children to get, go back out, while they're going to college, is renew that. I think a lot of, and that's a big boost every year, that they're doing what they supposed to, and, um-
Yeah, we wanted to start, but we wanted to be able to finish too.
Finish, yeah. So thank you, thank you all for what you all do.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. I believe Mr. Graham has came in the comprehensive transportation plane. You guys wanna? Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate it. We just came from the town of Sparta. So, uh, now we're here. Um, okay. So as most of you are aware, uh, NC DOT, Allegheny County, the town of Sparta, and the High Country Rural Planning Organization, which is the organization I staff, have been working on the development of the Allegheny County Conference of Transportation Plan over the past year. So it's been almost a year-long study. Um, and this process has been guided by a local steering committee and, of course, public input. The result of the Allegheny County CTP planning process and associated public input has produced three highway intersection improvement recommendations, four deviated fixed route recommendations for public transportation or Allegheny in motion, twenty-five pedestrian recommendations, and four multi-use path recommendations. And you should have those maps in your packets there. And, uh, so basically, Ruben and I just wanted to share this information with you and be available to answer any questions that you may have regarding the CTP recommendations since, um, we were not able to attend back in October due to Helene coming through and messing everybody's life up. So, um, we just wanted to be here in person, and I just want to reiterate, we're not asking for approval at this time. Just, here it is. This is where we're at. We're getting ready to button this study up and be available for any questions that you have. With that, uh, I believe Ruben wanted to at least go over the preliminary draft of the core document with you all, and, um, we'll be here to answer any questions.
Bobby's got a question for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, I think, a general question for the whole report.
Sure.
Under some of your recommendations about the sidewalks and bicycles and, does this report help the county, the town, apply for different grants to make some of these come true?
Correct. That is the intent of the comprehensive transportation plan, is to position local governments to get projects funded in the state transportation improvement program. It's the first step in doing so. Not only that avenue for project funding, but you can also use it for other grants that, that you see fit, that if one of those recommendations lines up with something that you're pursuing, then you should use it. Absolutely. Great question.
This is a key element-
Absolutely.
-in applying for grants.
Yes, specifically to get projects funded in the state transportation improvement program. But that said, you can use it for any other grant that you're interested in. Yep, you're welcome. Good question. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Chairman. Take it away, Ruben.
Okay. I just wanted to mention to you about, um, the actual core document, which, um, I'm not sure if it's, there it is. Okay, that's what the front page looks like. So in that, of course, the second page, you have, it's two pages beside each other, and that's the steering committee and our partners, DOT folks, and everyone that was involved in the process. And then you have your table of contents. And below, um, there's a little link to, the, the way it's gonna be situated once we do go through and complete the core document and the appendix, you'll be able to click on the appendix, and it will take you to that other document, because there are two, they're separate documents. The appendix has more details. It has a lot of the, um, the informational maps and data that we use to actually go through this process. The core document just sort of has the maps, CT maps, and the recommendations list. And, um, going further, it also has the executive summary, the vision, uh, goals and objectives, and then, um, the major projects, which are the three intersections. And then, um, the chapter, after, chapter one, shows the purpose and overview. And then, um, and this, uh, core document is still, I'm going through the process, but we wanted you to see how it's going to look, the, the document. We don't have the appendix because, uh, that one is still being worked on. We do have it, but, um, maybe about eighty, eighty-five percent of that is done. So, um, like I said, we sent that so that you could see what the plan is going to look like. And then, um, going further, well, you have the links for the state and federal policies, things we used to help to develop the CTP, and then also the documents we use within the local area and High Country. And then going further down, the existing and future conditions. And basically, what you understand about the CTP, there's a base year and a future year. And the base year is a replica of what is now existing, 2022, and in future, 2050, which are what the CTP maps show. And going further down, the portions that have not been filled in that will be filled out very soon are the actual comments or main comments we received from the survey. When they had the, um, public involvement period in December, we really didn't have any comments. We might have had a few, but they weren't any, we didn't really have any major comments. So that was very good. We think we did a thorough job, um, in this process. So, um, and the public involvement process is very important. Let's see. There should be the maps you already saw, but they are in, uh, the document, so. But pretty much everything is in there. And when it's done, um, we look forward to having that adopted by the Board of Transportation. Next month, we're looking to have it adopted by you all in the council and endorsed by the High Country RPO. So we're moving along, and we think that you will, um, be pleased at the results when the, uh, the plan is completed, the, the written document, the document itself. Okay. Are there any questions?
Just, I was just looking through some of your, uh, demographics, land use and trends, and I know a lot of these are just projections, but I, I noticed in the next twenty-eight years, you're projecting Allegheny County to grow in population a hundred and twenty-nine people. I, I just wonder how those numbers come about.
Well, I think when we had our first meeting, we were using, uh, Office of State Government data. But then we also have a statewide, um, model. And the model information is used when, uh, like for our model group, and that information is a little bit more accurate because of how they pulled the data and how they use it in the statewide model. So, um, we used to get our information from, uh, USA, Info USA. And now it's by, um, um, Data, I don't know what it's called. Data Axel. And we wanted to have better data in, uh, the plan. And that's what we ended up using, and it got approved through you all last year.
I'm just curious, now, the old projections turned out, you know, looking at today's population, uh, you know, or are we? I know it's a guesstimate at best.
Right.
And, uh, but, you know, just, just growing by a hundred and twenty-eight people in twenty-eight years, isn't, uh-
Well, with the data that we have now, these are the projections, but things can change. You know, a big plant can come. Anything could happen. I mean, Walmart could come, you know, you know. I'm sorry. An organization or a company could come that produces more trips, where people will come into Allegheny County, come to that business. So it can impact the number of trips and the volumes and, you know, and growth. So these things can happen, but we don't have a crystal ball. But the data that we use is correct data, and it was the most updated data that we had. And we projected it with the- And we projected it with a growth of about half a percent. And we projected that into the future and this is what we have, so.
But you're exactly right. It is our best guess based on the data, the best data sources that we can find. And so hopefully it'll grow more than that. Time will tell.
Yeah. And also, this is like a living document because this is a needs-based document. And so with us projecting in the future, we will come back maybe in five years or 10 years. That's usually when we do our CTPs, every five to 10 years. But if there is a need, it's possible it can be amended before then. So so far, this is what we have and.
I think you all put a lot of work into this program. It's been an ongoing thing for over a year now.
It's been a year, yes, yes. A lot of credit goes to the steering committee that's guided us through this and the public input that we've received as well. So it's been a good team effort all, all the way around.
Other questions?
I just wanted to say this is going to be extremely helpful to us. And we appreciate what you've done and it's exciting to see this coming close to fruition.
Thank you. And this is my first time meeting you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations on your new.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
And our last year committee meeting will be Thursday, so we can talk a little bit more.
You hear that?
Danielle's on it, for sure. Danielle, thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Yeah, y'all made it perfect, right on time.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next up is Allegheny County campers. I'll start this. Mr. Shipley and April can jump in. County acquired some campers back when earthquake came about. And that is since then coming on and the county owns the campers. And they is a great need, as we all know, in several counties down the mountains for people that send tents and stuff to get campers down there. And I would like to see us try to do something and get those campers headed in the right direction where they can be used and people out. It's, and we understand we've had people offer it when the time comes to, I think Garrison, somebody told him, maybe pull them down there for us, maybe. Is that correct?
Love it.
But anyway, we got some hoops to jump through, I think, to get to that point. So you guys go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We asked the board to give us, let it, give us a little time to go through the, our due diligence to see, you know, what the legalities are of this. And the only things that, that were, that they recommend, that are the groups we interacted with, recommended against was not sending the trailers out of state, you know, keeping them in North Carolina and focusing, you know, on the areas that maybe, that have been hit badly by, by Helene. And the other, the other was that maybe that we should probably steer away from renting the trailers. But then something internally, we, you know, there's four trailers altogether. We want to keep one of them for, for the command center.
For emergency management.
But I think it's important that whatever counties, we send these three to, that we don't need to do this in a formal way, but we just need to make sure they know there may be a time we come to them, you know, when we're the ones that get hit worse than them and they've got some excess resources. So I think that's, that's going to be important to communicate. But we certainly want to try to help the people that are in the greatest need. So I think this was a very good suggestion. And, you know, Bill brought it to, but there's also seems to be good support from the board on trying to do what we can do to help.
I talked to all the board one-on-one and everybody agrees that we need to try to, try to do that if we can. April?
Yeah, we're in support of this. We've done our due diligence. We just have a few procedural things that we need to do because these campers came from the Office of State Budget Management. They were paid for with state funds for earthquake recovery. So now that we're through that, we have gone through a process before to send a couple of these campers to Haywood County when there was a previous flooding situation. And our emergency management coordinator, we've had discussions with him, with Daniel Ruppin, and he's all for this, going to other North Carolina counties, proceeding with the resolution. And we just, we need to do those procedures.
Okay. So people know there's three campers that can go.
There's three campers that we can donate.
Right.
That is correct.
Right. Do you think that could happen in two weeks, in the next meeting? Can we be ready to?
Yeah, we can get the resolution done and get it to the board, yeah, at the next meeting.
Like we do that, we're free to.
We can do it for action next time, yeah. We can move forward with that process.
And can we, in the meantime, be looking at which county needs them the worst or something? Well, I had somebody call me, somebody in Ash County needed one to get moved out of the rental home because of flood damage and the guy ain't gonna let them stay, so.
Yeah, we certainly need to do that, see where the needs at and let them go in that direction and get people in them.
And in the resolution, I believe we have to name which county they're going to. Is that correct, Heather? In the resolution or do you know?
Sure. We can look, we can look back at the resolution that was done for Haywood County a couple of years ago. We can look back.
We need to do it quick as we can and get no warmer out.
That's true. I was sent a link by a lady and I'll pass that on to you. That's, that handles a lot of that need base deal, you know? Okay. Everybody understand we're clear on that? General Business, Sam Brown, Forrest Pulli.
We had presented this at a previous meeting and I think that I was here primarily to answer any additional questions you might have for us.
Any questions from anybody about the revitalization?
Probably not really question more comment, but I think this is a great idea if we got some people that's willing to work on this and fix it. The only thing I see that's probably, and I'm sure you probably already talked to Randy about this, but I guess, you know, if there's going to be any possible reasons to change something that's not there already, I think Randy needs to be involved with. But I know you all looking at just trying to repair stuff and make what's there better. But I guess the biggest thing is not just turning loose, making new trails and all that kind of stuff unless you go through Randy, the recreation. But I don't think you have any plans of that. That's the only thing I have.
Yeah, we've met with Randy on several occasions and talked to him about it. And I, one of the things we have discussed is how we can make this so that if there are changes in the future, I mean, that's the nice thing about trails. You can kind of move trails on doing that. But so, you know, we're aware of some of the future plans that are down there. We don't want to impact those at all. In fact, we want to enhance them by making the walking trails and the multi-use trails through there.
Are you ready to start tomorrow?
You know, it is supposed to be 15 degrees tonight.
It's good change all weather.
There actually is one issue that since we made the proposal that we're having to address, and that is since the hurricane event that came through, there are some really, really large trees that are down there. In fact, beyond our volunteer capability. So we're in the process of pending your approval of getting some bids on professional companies to come in and do this. And of course, that'll all be included in the funding that we provide from our, from the people that are sponsoring this. So we do have to go through that because that's one of the big things is to get some of those larger, larger trees out of there.
Yeah, one of the things that we did talk about was the possibility of the baseball facility if that was to ever come in, of course, we didn't want that. They're staying to the outside of the, where we think the ball field is going to go. Me, if anything, that'll add, because I think in the original plans of the baseball that Topfield did, had a track going around the facility anyway. That'd be one less thing that we have to do on that. I mean, I think it's a good idea myself.
One other thing on that too is that we do want to keep, obviously, in close contact with Randy as we go through this and as we get through the various stages of it. Our plan is to talk to him and say, here's what's next, here's what's next. And make sure that we're not interfering with any kind of plans in the future or anything that would be detrimental to the property.
Couple of questions. I think the, the precept of the idea is very good. I know Garrison and I are on the Recreation Committee and we really haven't talked about this. We had, you had a presentation a few months ago. I have concerns about what we're hoping to do here, hoping to do in the near future with some practice fields being put in, how that may impact some of the area that you're talking about using. I have physically, and I don't believe Garrison has either walked over this property to see where it's located. And I know in the past, we've had an issue with the high school about some land that really doesn't belong to them, but we're trying to work out a deal on that end of it. We also have a long-range plan of a sports complex. Then we also, in the back of our minds, have a swimming pool. We've been without a pool for going on five or six years now. I just want to be sure because we've had a lot of trouble with the Sam Brown property about what we can do, what we can't do legally with parks and recreation. I personally would like to walk over this proposed area and see what we're talking about. I think it's doing due diligence with the Recreation Committee to be involved in this. We haven't been involved in it. So with that being said, I, I support the concept. But I would like to at least table this till we can, till the Recreation Committee. We've got a scheduled meeting sometime here in the next couple of weeks that we could visit this piece of land, just to be sure. I don't want Heather spending months and months back and forth with Raleigh about something we overlooked. So I would just make a proposal that we table this till a future meeting based on our Recreation Committee meeting coming up here in a few weeks.
That's double. Is that fair with you guys? I mean, we don't have no time for it.
No, we're not going to be working on it tomorrow. So yes. I mean, whatever, whatever you feel like is best. But I mean, we're anxious to get moving forward on it, but I certainly understand your request. And so whatever you feel like is best.
Danielle, when's Parks and Recs next meeting? Hopefully we can get this done in two weeks.
I don't know if it'll be that soon. We're trying to set up a, someone to come in to present some information to them. But we'll do the best we can to make that happen. And if they're, we're able to do that and they can meet, then.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Get where he's coming from, where Bobby's coming from on this, but the trail is already there. I've walked the trail myself. They got boards falling out, bridges coming apart. If this is not fixed sometime and somebody gets hurt on our trail up there, regardless as a baseball field comes, five years, 10 years, we're going to be on the hook for that. So I'm fine with the recreation people walking through there. But far as Raleigh goes, the trail is already there. So we're not changing that.
I didn't realize the trail was in that better shape.
Yeah, it's, oh, yeah, they got pitchers. It's a mess.
One of the good things is that's happened kind of in conjunction with this is, I think I mentioned this before, is that we've been sponsoring a high school hiking club. And at our last hike, we had a couple of them canceled because of a club situation there. We had 43 students that were hiking around Sam Brown and we were actually kind of having to maneuver around because there are some areas that do need to be cleaned up before they're safely walked.
It's, it's just, it needs to be cleaned up and there's, there's some bridges that's coming apart.
Bridges, that one bridge, I don't remember.
So, so it's becoming a liability. I, I can't see where Raleigh would be a problem with trying to correct that part. Now, if everybody wants to table it, it's fine. Like Forrest said, they're not going to be working on it for a month. But I don't see us needing to push this down for two months, three months, four months because we either do it or we don't.
Well, I'm not suggesting pushing it down that far. I'm suggesting Recreation Committee is formed for recreation.
Right.
We haven't been involved in it. I would just like to tour the, the area. And I think with Randy or whoever wants to, that we just need to be sure that we're not doing something that's going to conflict with our master plan for recreation, you know, for the sports complex, if it ever comes to be.
So, so wouldn't you say the rec meeting is going to happen or do you?
Originally, we're looking for the first of February though. So we can check and see if the other people are available or if you need to have an extra meeting. I mean, you're welcome to do that.
These 30 days, you get a chance to look at it and then, and that meeting, it needs to be for action. That's what I've, that's the way I feel like, you know, and that'd give you all time to go look at it.
Randy, didn't you say that this, this path is away from the ball fields? It's, if they go in, if we get them in?
The trail is going to be on the outer edge of where the ball fields are going to be yet.
It's going to be on the land for the ball fields, Rick?
It's going to be on the outer edge. I mean, your ball field is going to be here and your trail is going to go around in a loop.
Maybe keeping.
And that bridge you're looking at, it's actually further down in the creek area.
Keep it close to the microphone.
The ridge that we're referring to here is down where the creek is anyway. We wouldn't be down in there at the ball field regardless. The parking lot is going to be, going to be up a little further than that, than where you're looking at right there.
We need to keep in mind too, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tim.
Keep in mind that, you know, this, it would be great to have the ball fields and the swimming pool and stuff, but it doesn't make sense to me to let the trail just go for five years, 10 years and just let it go to pot. Nobody can use them really like it should be able to. So I'm, you know, even if there's some of it interferes, it's a trail. You just, you bulldoze it away. So to me, it just, it's common sense, like, okay, let's get, let's use what we have for as long as we can. And if we do have that help from the state to do this thing, then we'll, I feel like then you can redo a plan, maybe connect some trails, go around the areas. I think would give us more options.
Well, you can. And like I said before, I do think it's a add-on. If you come to one of our ball practices or games, the moms are sitting here and their kids are out there practicing. A lot of times, like at Veterans Park, they'll, they'll walk around the, the track. So I think it's a, that it would be a add-on to anything we do inside Sam Brown, whether it's ball fields or, or, or practice fields or game fields, whatever we are able to do.
I think everybody's in agreement to do this thing, this project. Greg, do you have something, question?
I think we need to go ahead and prove the trail thing. We got a school to build. It may be five, 10 years before we get a ball field. So go ahead and prove it so people get out and walk and exercise.
Christian Goody, David?
I'm up and do with the, with the majority of the board is, is feeling on this. I think we definitely need to do the project, but I see both sides here. I think, I think maybe we could, maybe we could approve contingent upon a walkthrough, contingent upon no issues with Raleigh or maybe we approve contingent.
I think I can make a motion that we can, I guess, table it for a month until our next first of the month meeting and give the Recreation Department time to go look at it and put it up for action then.
What a motion to table it for 30 days.
Second.
Second, inter-party discussion. My own favor. Input 5-0.
Thank you. If you'll just let us know when, when you'd like to schedule that and we'll certainly make it available. If you'll just let us know when, when you'd like to schedule that and we'll certainly make it available.
Okay, NAPCO grant extension, April hand.
I think we're going to tag team this one. This is, this is actually just an extension of a grant that the High Country Council of Governments has helped Allegheny County assist with this. It's for NAPCO. And they're just asking, actually, Mr. Shepley had a walkthrough with, I believe, Bill Osborne and a couple of folks from NAPCO last week. And they discussed this, and this is just a letter requesting that we extend that grant money. The only thing that's going to cost the county is $9,000 and we already have that budgeted in this current fiscal year budget. So we're just asking for a review of this. And if the board has any questions for either one of us, we'll be happy to answer.
Danielle.
I had a great, we had a great opportunity to tour the plant and see what they do. It's remarkable. I had no idea that there was something like that. And, you know, with, it was funny, right before I went in, I have this Fitbit and I had just recharged it right before I walked in the door and we toured the whole plant. And when I got back in my car, I just checked to see, how many steps have I taken here? 4,000 steps, just in that plant. So I mean, we have a, we have a worldwide entity in this county that we should all be very, very proud of and what they're doing. And some of the work they've done with, you know, with entertainment agencies and other just unique groups is just, it'll, it'll blow your mind. If you have an opportunity to ever tour that plant, you should do that. The robotics and, and the employment of, I think, close to 100 people. Is that right, April?
That's correct.
Yeah. So it was great and we certainly want to support them in getting this extension. They're, you know, they're having, all, all organizations are having difficulty hiring people and finding people. So, you know, he's, we want to give them a little bit more time and we've already gotten word that there'll be no problem on, on making this happen.
It's amazing to tour that place. I have no clue either, but it's a lot of money and a lot of technology sitting up there. Okay, Bobby?
I guess more for Mr. Shepley and maybe some of the other board members. NAPCO started in this basement. That, that's where NAPCO was born.
Wow.
Now, almost 90% of their employees are Allegheny County residents. They've just put in through this part of this grant, part of the reconstruction, almost $12 million in the new facility revamping and machinery that they bought. This extension is a plus for the people of Allegheny County.
Absolutely.
The tax value that NAPCO added with this investment quadruples the amount of money that we were talking about. To me, it's, it's a no-brainer. It's, NAPCO has supported this county for 40-some years, going on 50 almost. And they have given back every time somebody has asked something from NAPCO. Most of the time, NAPCO has stepped up to the plate.
That's great. Thank you.
I would support this. I would make that motion to support this resident letter.
So do we know how many employees are short meeting their criteria? Does anybody know that?
It's 20, isn't it?
I believe it's 20, but they have not been able to keep the 20, it's 24 for the grant, but they have not been, it's gone up and down the whole time. I've had several meetings with them also before Mr. Shepley. So 20, I believe currently it's 20 that they're, they're looking for.
So how does this work? In six months, if they haven't brought up to 20, where are we at then?
There'll be a conversation with, Department of Commerce is actually where this grant's coming from and with the Cog to see if it can be extended again, or that's my understanding of that.
The $9,000 goes to whom?
The $9,000 actually goes to the High Country Council of Governments for doing all the grant paperwork for us and all the reporting to the Department of Commerce. It was a $180,000 grant. And then we budgeted $189,000 to take care of that $9,000 for the Council of Governments to handle the paperwork, the meetings and everything for this project.
That's where it's already been budgeted in.
Correct. Yes.
That's it. I just, I was curious.
So NAPCO has been spent on this grant. They've still got, or we got it.
They haven't, they haven't drawn it down at this.
They, they have not drawn it down. Yes. None.
Yeah, so that's a good.
They're trying to meet what they need to do to get it.
That is correct. Yes.
Any further questions? We've got a motion in a second. Garrison, you good? All in favor?
Who was the second?
5-0.
I am.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the proposal for the fairgrounds. Danielle?
We received two RFPs for the fairgrounds concession bid. I know there's been discussion over this. I don't know how far into it you want me to go before you.
Well, what, sorry to interrupt you. You know, we think it's advisable to do some further review, take a look at the two proposals in a little more depth, not take any action at this time.
Well, I understand that one proposal is like 25% of, so we don't even know what that is.
Just need to do a little more analysis of it. You're right.
You would have to sell 20, over $20,000 worth of concessions to even get up close to the other bid.
He can do that in one weekend out there.
Can't. So see, we don't have record of that.
Oh, check with Derrick Brown that used to be out there.
This is a kind of a due diligence thing that we need to do here.
So can we ask the people that did it last year how much they made? Don't really have to share that.
Tell us. We can't hurt for us to ask.
Let's table this to the next meeting to do a little more checking on it.
I agree, but I was just curious.
We don't know nothing about the new company really, so we need to, we need to back up and slow down this little bit and do some research. Set a real, everybody table the fairgrounds deal till next meeting.
I'm good.
Put that on the agenda from mid-month.
Thank you.
Okay. Surplus vehicle, Danielle?
We, let me get to the right page. We did bids for these back in October. It was tabled then because of the amount of bids. We only got, there's two surplus vehicles available. One's the old Ed van, everybody's seen Ed going around town. We only got one bidder and these were their bids. There was concern over the amount bidded. We did some, the AIM, Melissa at AIM did some research. The amount that these go for, and I understand it's not some, we're not like selling it like you normally would, but it's, the bid prices they felt were very low for the value that could be gotten out of them. You don't have to accept these bids. You can choose to put it out again for, to try to request more bids. And it was suggested that we, we normally set these over near the maintenance building, across from the fire department in that grassy lot, that they be moved to the parking lot up top where everybody can see. We have the ability to make larger signs and we can put them in the windshields of them so when people go by that they would see that they're available. We did check with other county entities and groups that we support and nobody needed either of these.
Nobody, no other agency needed. The only, you know, I know we need to get as much money as we can. These things were put out bid, put out for bids, only one person bid. Now, there may be a suggestion to rebid. So that sort of nullifies what this person did because everybody knows what a minimum bid now is going to be. In October, we tabled it to see if another department needed it.
Another agency or department, yeah.
Nobody needed it. I, I just have a problem not living up to our process of putting stuff out for a bid. That, that's just me.
I think we need to put it up here in front so everybody in the county can see it and rebid it again. You can't see it when it's sitting up there where nobody knows where it's sitting at.
So it's, but you put it in a paper, didn't you? Or somebody reads the paper anymore.
There was interest, apparently calls were received from some churches. Maybe that might be interested.
Not because of you.
It's legal for us to turn this bid down, right?
Yes, you do not have to accept these. You can reject agents. You can reject them and then we can re-advertise.
And park them up here where everybody can see them.
I wish there was more interest. For whatever reason, it doesn't seem like either people's.
Yeah, they were on the website also.
Okay.
Make a motion, put them out for bid again and park them up here in front of the county building.
Okay. Do we start with to reject this?
Make a motion, I'll make a motion to reject this bid here. Put it out for another bid and park them up here in front of the county building.
Motion here, second.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
How much do we really stand to gain if we were to reject these? How much money could we potentially be losing out on if we even got another bidder?
Just whatever's, if they rebid the same amount, I mean.
I think it's the principle of it too. I mean, you basically giving them away. I mean.
But they would get both of these for 1,250? Yeah.
What happens if nobody bids on it the second time? Are these bids still valid or you're doing away with them right now? So you're rolling the dice. You might get a higher bid, you might get a lower bid.
Nothing says you can't.
Do you just keep kicking this can down the road or do you make a final decision someplace? How many times can you do it?
It's just one time and I remember some years back, we redone the post office out there one time, you know, and got a little more money, but it is cheap. But I mean, I'm with whatever the board wants to do and we done got a motion and we got a second. So to, to do away with this one and, and redid out for bid again. Did you say you had some enters from churches?
There were some calls that we received that were, they didn't, they said they didn't realize that they were available to bid on. And Ed has the, that's the one with the lift in it, right? The lift alone is worth more than both of those bids put together.
Got a motion in a, in a second. So let's, just we'll call for a vote. All in favor? Greg, any opposed? Garrison, I didn't see your bid.
Abstain.
Okay, okay. Three, two. Four to, four to one, right? Four to one. Okay. Budget the bid, but April hand.
Okay, just have a couple of finance items tonight. The first one is a, we need to add to the amount that's being paid from the court system to the Board of Education. This is something that, that the county has to handle for the Board of Education. This is basically a pass-through, but we have additional funds coming in for the year. So we need to add $30,000 to these lines.
Increase was how much?
30,000. Yeah. We've already paid out almost 30,000 this year, so this, this is a good thing for the school system. This is just a pass-through.
The fines and forfeitures for the school system, when I was on the board 20-some years ago, was $30,000. It's never changed till, till this time. I congratulate the judges.
Make a motion to approve budget amendment, fines and for fun number one.
Got a motion in a second, but Garrison, any further discussion? If not, on favor. 5-0. Transfer overtime, April hand.
Okay, the next one I have for you is just a line item transfer. We're just taking it from one item to another. Back during the pandemic, we created an emergency overtime line because we could not get paramedics on staff. It, it was a retention tool. And we're getting rid of this line actually with, with this budget year, but this is how much that we have asked our full-time paramedics to work over their scheduled overtime already. $16,125 we've spent out in that. So we're going to transfer the money out of the regular overtime line. We're going to do away with this line as of this meeting and move forward with just regular overtime.
$16,125 transfer. A motion for that.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. Garrison, any further discussion? Not all in favor? 5-0. Line item transfer salaries and benefits, April.
Okay, this item is just putting money back into the salary line and the FICA and retirement line where we paid out the previous county manager's annual leave, his vacation time, we call it. The contingency line that we're transferring that from, the $36,890, was actually reimbursement that came in from the project, 90 South Main Project, the earthquake repairs. So that was reimbursement back to us. And then we had $35,000 budgeted into contract labor in the admin budget. We want to take $25,000 out of that to take care of this, this deficiency for the next, for the rest of the year.
What's the total of this?
The total is actually $61,890. And the total is actually the sum of the 57, 753 in salary, $560 in FICA and $3,577 in retirement.
So has a previous county manager done been paid for this?
Correct. Yes. And when Mr. Shepley was hired and brought on board and has a new contract, now we have the numbers knowing what our number needs to be for that salary, FICA and retirement line for the rest of the year. This is taking care of that budget, those budget items for the rest of the year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any further discussion?
So he's done been paid for this, the previous county manager done been paid for this?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? If not, call for a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Three. Oppose. To oppose. Put on down county manager's comment.
Yes, can you hand? First, I wanted to say that it's, this has been a really good experience. The people of the county have been, have warmly welcomed me, as has the board. It, it has been, you know, that, that what I thought about this county coming from the outside here for visits on the weekends, it's turned out to be true. It's a, it's, it's a vibrant county and it's a warm county. Not today, but, but it's warm and I, and I appreciate the warm welcome that I've received from everyone. What I'm going to want to do today is a little different than I'll, than I'll normally. What I'm gonna wanna do today is a little different than I'll, than I'll normally do. And I'm doing this for the purpose of informing the board of what, who I've met with and alerting you sort of to think about, you know, groups that I haven't met with, that I need to meet with. But also alerting the public in case there's anyone in any organizations out in Allegheny County or in the sound, in the surrounding region that want a, an opportunity to come in and talk a little bit about what they do and how they could serve the, the people of Allegheny County. So quickly going through this, there's, we've had, this is from my first day, which was December second through today. We've had three board meetings. I've met individually with board members about six times. I've met with seven of the department heads. I had a, an excellent meeting with the school superintendent and she, and Sid, her, I don't know his exact title, but ma- his maintenance person. They took me on an in-depth tour of the, of the high school. And it's clear that, you know, there, our support is, is very much needed by them and if I just, it was a great meeting and I'm looking forward to us having a, a really strong relationship, you know, with the, with the school and just wanted to take a second to thank Missy and Sid for their hospitality and for what they do for the kids of this, of this community. I met with Brian from the, the Allegheny County Sheriff's Department and we spent a considerable period of time together, very good meeting. I met with the, the Allegheny, let's say I met with the disaster preparedness team. We met with our auditor in prior, prior to his presentation to, to this board. We've had three courthouse construction work plan meetings that have been good. Very comprehensive. We've took, you know, gone to the, to the courthouse itself to see how the work is proceeding and seems to be going very well at the, at this moment. Had an interview with the Allegheny News and Bob, it, it took some time to, to meet with me and I appreciate that and did an in-depth interview. Had a very strong meeting with the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce with Larry. Was invited to the Allegheny County Extension Advisory Council Lunch and was amazed at some of the things that, that they do and looking forward to doing more with them in the future. I told you about the Napco tour. I, I met with, with Forrest from the Allegheny Sparta Trail Association and he explained to me in depth what, what they hope to do. And so he informed me about what it's all about and what, what the plans are for it. I met with the Allegheny County Education Foundation, with the Sparta Police Department, the Recreation Committee, the National, the North Carolina Association of Community, of County Commissioners Disaster Recovery Group. Met with the Virginia Carolina Water Authority, attended a breakfast with the, for the legislative breakfast for the Allegheny County Sewer and Water Group. Had a meeting on, online with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Attended the Blue Ridge Energy Christmas Dinner. And it's supposed to say Glade Creek rather than Glad Creek there at the bottom, but Glade Creek Volunteer Fire Department leader came by to, to speak with me. And also Bill and I, like on one of the first days I was here, we met with the Sparta Town Manager. So it's been a busy time and I want, I really want to thank Danielle for, you know, setting all these meetings up and making sure it's all doable for me. So thank you Danielle for your work on that, but. And so I'd be glad to answer any questions. So, you know, plan on, I think that, you know, this first, the beginning part of the time I'm here, I want to absorb information. I want to know what's out there, what, what are the resources that we have? What are the, the different organizations we need to interact with? What do they see as their interaction, as their need for cooperation with the, with the county? Cause one of the things that we're gonna, we're all about is coalition building and partnership building. And we're gonna, we don't, anything that stands in the way of that, we want to remove so that we can be a model in the state of North Carolina and nationally for rural counties' cooperation between different organizations. That's all I've got unless you all have any questions.
You got any questions for Bill? Enjoyed working with you the first month. It has been busier going on the second month and.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I've enjoyed.
I agree with what you say about we all work together. That is a must that we try to do that, so.
Add some more to that list?
I want to.
I was thinking about High Country Council Government, which is important. It plays an important role in there.
Yeah, okay.
Flatchen County Health District Department, which we.
Yes, absolutely.
Hand in hand.
Do we already have that one scheduled? Okay.
What about DSS? I think you.
Yeah, I met with DSS, yep. But any of you, if you think of any, any others or if the public thinks of, has an organization they'd like for us to meet with, our doors are open, you know, we want to learn and collaborate as much as we can.
Right up to the, to go to the High Country Council government one minute and it's always third meeting of the, third week of the month, month meeting is always at night. We have daytime.
Sounds good.
Might work on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, thank you. We appreciate you. County manager comments. Who wants to crank it? I'll crank it right here. Just want to thank DOT.
Back county. You said county manager, but you've done, did your comments.
Did I say county manager, county commissioner, excuse me. I ain't bucking for your job now. County manager's comment, county commissioner's comment. I just want to thank DOT and the town of Sparta and all the private contractors that's got us through all this snow, sleet and mess for the last week. They put in a lot of hours and get very few thank yous, but they've done a good job. They've had a battle on their hands, but I'd just like for the board to know that they got our support and we thank them for all they do. And with that being said, I'll hand it off to Startle Gray.
I agree with Bill on that. People, people really don't understand when I hear pushing snow, long night, nothing open. I turn that truck by yourself. I've done it before, but I appreciate everything the state and the independent contractors and everybody's done in the county. Keep the roads open.
Yeah, a couple of things. I, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to look at what Jeff Chandler does a newsletter and he actually sends it in all our emails. And I've sort of went through it a couple of times, just looking through and the first thing I want to do is thank him for doing that. And there's a lot of good stuff in that. I mean, he's got milestones, which, which I think is very important to, to remember. A lot of the folks that we've got that's worked for, I mean, I know he's got some folks that's worked for twenty-six year, twenty-one years. He, he goes through, he, he lays out all these different folks that has put in all this time for the county, which I think is very, you know, do them, that they, that they, we know they're working for us. They've worked for us this amount of time and that we appreciate them. And then he also puts in like new hires, which is really cool. Like new names that we've never seen before that people come in over the last month or so. And, and he puts in a lot of good stuff in there, like some, some just stuff about the winter. It's just really good stuff. So I've just wanted to take a moment and point that out that people, cause we get them in their emails and I know all the people who worked in the county gets them, but it's good stuff. And I want to thank him for putting that effort in to do that, cause there's a lot of really good stuff in there. The other thing I want to mention was when we go through winters and, which I know at my age, some people will call me a baby, some people call me old, but I, some, something that I've learned over, over the years is through wintertime, elderly people take a hit. Whether, I don't know what it is, but it seems to be hard on them and we lose a few every year through. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, people to, you know, watch out for their elderly neighbors, their elderly people, family, whatever, just to keep an eye on them because we do have a large population of elderly people. And then the other thing is, I was sort of like a New Year's resolution. Anybody like those? So I was thinking, you know, this year, twenty twenty-five, I think it, I would love to see a new start of wiping the slate clean of the past year's history and, and just work with what we have. And what we have is a lot of great things in this county. I know it's sort of, you know, with the winter coming, it sort of slows stuff down, like the courthouse, the, you know, school's gonna be slow. Different projects we got going on, you know, I know we're working towards the, the transfer station. But I do think there's a lot of things that us guys, now guys, we don't have lady anymore, but that we can find common ground on that I would love to see we get to that place of where we can figure out what we can work through and work to make things better for our county and our county's residents. I know there's lots of things that we can. I, I just, I look forward to twenty twenty-five and, and going down that road. I look for different people's ideas, you know? Of how we look at different things. I mean, just like, I mean, even this thing about the trail thing, you know, you got people willing to put out money and time and effort to help improve our trails. You know, these, I just see lots and lots of good stuff and I know there's lots of things that all of us can work towards to do things that will better our things for our county, for our people. And I look forward to doing that. So I, that's my promise. Try to, we'll get, see what twenty twenty-five brings us. That's it.
Good New Year's resolution.
Yeah.
Bobby?
Well, between you and Timmy, you took everything. DOT, I hope the newspaper gives them credit. They did a fantastic job. It, I think that storm sort of snuck up on them really quick. I know there was a bad wreck over at Twin Oaks. That mountain was backed up for over an hour. But it took DOT wreckers to get in there and get those vehicles out. I think they did a great job. Other than that, like Timmy said, check on your neighbors, elderly people. If somebody needs firewood, there's churches, there's different organizations. If they need heating fuel, there's different organizations. That's what they're there for, so use them. And if you've got pets outside, I've got a strange dog. The colder it is, the more she wants to stay out. I'd literally have to drag her inside, but some animals aren't that lucky, so. People need to watch out for, for all these different animals. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Garrison?
I'll echo that statement. I'm really appreciative to the folks who work at, at the DOT Department. We appreciate all the time and effort you put into that to keep us safe out on the roads. I had a quick text message come in from Ms. Vessel who presented earlier. I think we were talking about the four hundred thousand dollar range of scholarships. She actually sent it to me and it was, this year's class got four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And, and that number is, is remarkable. And being a student who received one of those scholarships when I graduated from Allegheny High, I'd just like to say thank you to all the folks who are involved with that organization. We appreciate what you do. It's very unique to Allegheny County.
I'd just like to add to that, that Wilkes Community or the schools deal there that John Woodruff had the foresight to put that plan into action years ago and it's had some good leadership all the way through to the present time. Those girls do a good job. Okay, with that being said, got a request for a closed session. General Statute one four three dash three one eight dash one one to consult an attorney and also personnel.
You want to include any, are they coming? Person you mentioned. Okay.
Good. Okay, I've got a motion from Garrison Lee. Greg's got a second. All in favor?
Let's take a five-minute break here.
I agree with that. Five minutes.
Thank you.
Have a good day, you guys.
You too.